Good evening, everybody. Vice Mayor, members of the council staff, people out in the audience, members of the public, great to see you. Thanks so much for being here. Let's call this meeting to order. Will you call the roll, please, Russell?
Councilmember Doug McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Freddie Fisickelli. Councilmember Steve Breckroods.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary Jablonsky.
Here.
Mayor Jeff Nelson.
Here. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith, it's great to see you here tonight. It's very, very difficult. And welcome back to your family. And your father, just a special person. We talked about this Tuesday night, but a pioneer, just ethical, high standards, and fought for this town and what it stands for today. And I'm only proud to say that I knew Gary adored him and loved him, but, you know, recognize him as a pioneer of this community and meant so much to us and where we are today. And again, our thoughts and prayers with you and your family, and you have a family here, and just great to see you here tonight, Keith.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to ride on into item number three. We have a presentation tonight, an update on the I-75 project. Monica Diaz, and Scott Gumbhar, and Antonio Castro. Welcome. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us here this evening.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come back to you, to give you an update. We saw you at the later part of last year, so now we are here to present an update on the project. We're beginning the third of four segments, which is Segment D, which is what we refer to, south of Sheridan Street to north of Griffin Road. We came back to you for Segment E, which was from 595 to just south of Griffin Road. And is the presentation? The presentation?
I just need one minute.
Okay.
Sorry, Monica, minor technical glitch. We apologize.
Mayor, it's always good when we go through the practice.
You're right. You're absolutely right. Never an issue, never a problem. You get hurly, make sure everything works, and, you know, that's what usually happens.
We did provide you with the handout, and it is posted online. We're going to have a community meeting at the Ivanhoe Community Center on the 27th of August, starting at 7:00 PM. And this is, we've invited all the communities to come out to learn about the construction, particularly the installation of the sound barrier walls, and meet the construction team. So we appreciate you sharing this online and getting the word out to the community. It starts at 7:00 PM? Yeah. And the address is 6101 Southwest 148th Avenue, the Ivanhoe Community Center.
Mayor, if you don't mind, while we wait, can we ask?
Absolutely.
A question or two? I'm curious of the status of the park and ride that was at Griffin and 75. I know it's not funded, but, you know, I think Davey made a request, and I know we made a request, that we didn't want it at all, and there are other places it could be used. What's the status of that?
Right now, that is not programmed, and there's no discussions as part of this project to have that.
Is it still on the map?
We don't have that information, but we can find out for you.
Okay. Okay. And what's the length of time for this project to completion?
For the entire corridor, we're late 2018, but in this segment in particular, we will, we're estimating opening in summer of 2018. So completely, with all the segments, from 595 to 170th, is going to be 2018.
We're getting close.
I asked him for a key from my phone, and it crashed his computer.
Really?
Didn't have enough power.
Okay. So, like I said, we are here to discuss the Segment D. We are, here's our project team, the FDOT Program Managers, Paul Lampley, Antonio Castro is here with us today. He's the DOT Construction Project Manager. We have Scott Gumbhar, as you met earlier. He's the Senior Project Engineer with Eastman &amp; Russo, the design-build firm for this particular segment, Ranger Construction and the Wattman Group. And I will be your Public Information Officer, here to give you the latest and greatest information about the project. This is an overview of the segments, and in particular, the Segment D corridor, which is again the third of four segments, as we refer to them. We broke them up into groups, south of Sheridan Street to north of Griffin Road, which is approximately 3.7 miles. The schedule for this project is September of this year. We'll start construction. We're estimated to be done by summer of 2018, and the cost is approximately $80 million. The schedule is subject to change due to weather unforeseen circumstances. Should this change, we'll be sure to coordinate with you and let you know where we are with the scheduling. The scope of work and the improvements that you are going to see once the project's completed is we're constructing express lanes in the existing median. We're constructing entrance and exit ramps to the express lanes from the general purpose lanes, constructing sound barrier walls along nine neighborhoods, and also the Sheridan Street interchange. And I'll get into that a little bit later on in this presentation. Widening and replacing the deck at Sheridan Street is also part of this project. We're constructing an express lane bridge just south of Griffin Road. We're installing additional traffic cameras, dynamic message signs, and toll gantries, and also adding new signage, signals, lighting, and landscaping. This is a typical section of where the express lanes are going to go. Again, they're going to be positioned in the center existing median, separated from the general purpose lanes. Also, two north and two southbound lanes will be constructed in as a part of the express lanes, separated by concrete barrier walls with full width paved shoulders. This diagram shows the ingress and egress ramps that will be constructed to access and exit the express lanes. If you want to learn more about how you're going to exit and enter the lanes relative to your neighborhood or your commute, you can go online to 75-express, and it gives you an interactive map, so you can look to see exactly where you can enter and exit. This is a diagram of the Sheridan Street interchange and some of the improvements that we're going to be doing in this area. We wanted to highlight some of the sections with the bridge that's going to be replaced. Scope of work includes constructing ponds at the interchange to aid with drainage, widening the Sheridan Street Bridge to the north, and replacing the existing bridge deck, installing additional signalized turn lanes, and installing new sidewalk on the bridge, as well as upgrading the lighting, the landscaping, signage, and signals. Lane closures, we know that we're going to expect lane closures during construction, but please be advised that the travel lanes will remain open during the peak hours. We are required to adhere to strict lane closure times, and if you could get that information online as well, and we'll send information out on a regular basis, so everybody understands what's happening along the roadway. Sound barrier walls is a big part of this segment. We have ground-mounted sound barrier walls that are proposed in this plan. It's the first order of business for the contractor to complete this within the first year of construction by June 2015. We have been working with communities directly, coordinating with them, hence we are having that public meeting on August 27. And part of this work, just so you know, is that we're doing it in the daytime only. We're not allowed to work at nights or on the weekends to mitigate the impacts to the residents. Some of these communities on this next slide are benefiting from the sound barrier walls. We have Sheridan Glen, The Crossbow, Waverly Hundred, Falcons Lee, Waterford, Hawks Bluff, Ivanhoe Estates, and Chelsea. Again, here's the information for our public meeting that we're going to be having. You can get this information online, but here's the address. It's at the Ivanhoe Community Center at 7:00. We'll be having a presentation at 7:30, and you get to meet the team and ask any questions you want about the project. The adjacent segments for your information are north, the north of Segment D is Segment E, which we came to you about earlier to discuss the work. Work began March 2014, and it's anticipated to be completed by spring 2017. South of Segment D, we have Segment C, which is south of Miramar Parkway to south of Sheridan Street. The work for this particular area began in June 2014, and were anticipated to be completed by fall of 2017. What to expect during construction, there are lane closures, detours, increased travel times. We ask you that you please use caution when you are driving through the roadway. You can go to our website to get periodic updates. We're sending information out via email, and also having signage out in the roadway to guide motorists. If there's any opportunity for you to give us your feedback on how you're getting around during construction, we welcome your comments online, or you can call me. My contact information will be at the end of this presentation. The contractor is required to monitor noise, vibrations, and water and sweep the area to minimize those effects during construction. And again, we ask you to use caution, because there is heavy equipment crews and workers in and around the area. Please stay informed. I'm here to help you and keep you updated. My contact information is here. You can reach me via email. There's my direct phone number. And again, you can submit information online to 75-express.com, and also sign up for our updates as well. So we thank you very much, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you, Monica. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you for coming and going through this project and give us an update. We appreciate it. Other, I know, Doug, that you had talked about the park and ride.
I do.
And I'll get to you, Freddie. Go ahead, Doug.
She scared me a little bit about some bridge related to Griffin Road, entering the express lanes or something. What's that about?
I'll bring somebody up here to elaborate on that for you.
Is it entering at Griffin?
Yeah, you guys mentioned in this presentation related to some sort of bridge at Griffin, related to entering or exiting the express lane, so I just...
Let me elaborate on that. That's the C-11 Canal Bridge, which is just to the south of Griffin Road. I'm thinking it's north, though. Just to the north of Griffin Road. But it's...
It's Scott, right? Scott?
Scott.
You can grab that microphone, pull it up, so we can hear you. Perfect.
Is that better?
Beautiful. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Just to the north of Griffin Road, but that's in the express lanes themselves. Most of its work is in the express lanes. There's going to be some egress and egress ramp.
But how do you get in there? I guess when you say "bridge," is it going to be related to the flyover part that's present on Griffin, or is it going to be underneath?
It's an at-grade bridge on the express lane section. You currently have two bridges on Main Line I-75 that you drive over. Probably don't even realize you're on a bridge, because there's nothing high or elevated or bringing you over or anything. It's just like the traveling pavement just continues. It happens to be a bridge, and you cross over a canal. This is the same bridge, but currently in the median. There is no bridge, because we don't have travelway there. So we're building a bridge in the median, just similar to the two that are northbound and southbound I-75.
Now, is that an entry or an exit point for the express lanes at that point?
No, that's not an entry or exit, no.
Okay. Where for, for, I guess, Western residents or us, where would the exit or entrance be related to the express lanes for us to get on or get off?
You can't get off. Have a look at the map. You can. Yes, you absolutely can. It's not 595, which you get on at one end and get off at the other end. We have designated entry points and exit points throughout the corridor. So the southbound exit for those folks, this is a connectivity with 595, so there's going to be a reversible lane bridge coming through Segment E that's going to carry you into the express lanes heading southbound. You're going to be able to get off just south of Griffin Road, so you could access Sheridan Street.
Uh huh.
So if you were coming from I-95, for example, and wanted to jump into the 595 express lane, this network that the Department of Transportation has created is going to take you westbound on 595. There'll be a dedicated bridge keeping you in the express lane section, and just south of Griffin Road, you'll be able to exit.
Okay.
That'll be an exit point.
So you can get off on...
It all depends on northbound and southbound.
You can get off on Sheridan Street.
You could get off at Sheridan Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And if you're going, getting off, or entering, whether it be Sheridan Street coming north or Griffin Road coming north, how would you enter that express section?
Well, if you're heading northbound on I-75, it's just south of Griffin Road, so from Sheridan Street, you'll be able to access the express lanes.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
We put this map up, and I know it's very hard to see there, but I do want to direct you to the website, only because that...
I wrote it down. It's 75-express?
Yeah. That's correct. And I want everybody to know that that's, that map that I'm speaking about, or speaking from, that we had in the presentation, it's on the website, so you can see it there, and it shows the entrance points and so forth.
I mean, interactive and programmed, so that you can scroll over the points, see exactly where you can get on and get off.
Okay. I guess my next question for me is, who do we need to speak to and/or see or direct to are not wanting that park and ride? I know you're aware of it, but we'll be going to Tallahassee this year, so I don't know if there's somebody else's ear we need to bend, or arm we need to twist, to make sure that park and ride's taken off the map.
Well, your communication would be through the Department of Transportation, for sure.
Okay.
It wouldn't be this project team.
All right. Not a problem. We'll make sure, we'll make sure we get some phone calls ahead of time and arrange for meetings when we're in Tallahassee, to make sure we get our point across again.
Well, the good thing about it is, is I think that they're listening. It's not part of this project, and it's much more expensive and very, very difficult to incorporate after the, after the fact. So I assume it's after the fact. It's not part of the project directly.
Our project, Mayor, has been bid and selected, and we're moving forward with construction. We're not adding that as part of this project.
Great. Great, great, great.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Freddie?
No.
No, I thought, Yuri?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the update. Doug nailed all the questions I had, especially the bridge part, but now I understand it. Matt, you're going to match the other two.
Right.
Which is really more like a culvert, in my mind, than a bridge.
It's a good way to look at it. You're correct.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And those, those center lanes, just to be clear, those center lanes, you know, on 595, they're reversible lanes. Are these reversible lanes, or are they not reversible lanes?
Throughout the majority of the corridor, it's not reversible. The reversible section begins with a connectivity to the 595.
Okay.
And it's only at the very northern end of I-75.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
But the rest of it through this section that we're talking about now in this area, it's not reversible. Two lanes in each direction.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I had one other.
Go ahead, Doug.
Is this a toll road?
The lanes will be told, yes.
Okay. And it's going to fluctuate? Do you have any idea, or that's not part of what your scale is, of what the range of the fee's going to be, from $2 to $8, 50 cents to $3? Do we have any idea what that range of dollars is?
It is based on the volume.
The more traffic, the higher the rate.
Right. It's based on volume, which we don't have at this time. We don't have any. But the minimum charge, like you see on 595, is 50 cents.
Same thing. Same concept. Okay.
And Sunpass, will it be accessible?
Absolutely.
Through Sunpass? Okay.
Great. Any other additional questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Monica, thank you. I asked if we just go, maybe, talk to them on the way out?
Sure. If you have any questions, I'm available.
And plus, just a confirmation again, they have their meeting on August 27 at the Ivanhoe Community Center, 6101 Southwest 148th Avenue, from 7 until 8:30. Okay?
That's correct.
Monica, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, thank you. Antonio, wish we could have heard you speak, but welcome. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
They don't have speakers for it.
Yes, they both did. There's no question about that. Okay. That concludes the presentation. Item number four, public comment.
Come on, you must be kidding. There's no public comment.
Sorry, Mayor. Russell jumped up just at that time. We have two speakers for public comment, and since I don't know how to operate the time clock, just be quick. We have John Eastman and Barry Nunzic.
Training. He's in training on the time clock.
Seeing John has waived his time tonight, Barry's up.
Barry Nunzic, Southwest Ranches, 163rd and Sterling. Budget time, gentlemen. I want you to remember one word: no. Okay? When you look at it, just go, "Do we need it? No." Okay? Can we afford it? No. Okay? Try to spend my money wisely. Okay? I'd appreciate that.
Thanks.
Eliminate everything.
Yes.
Yeah. So... Yeah. Yeah. Good evening, Council. John Eastman, 4801 188th Avenue. Traffic meeting was great last night. I think Steve did a wonderful job. All the concerns are out there. We got some global feedback on 184th Avenue. I think everybody in Country Estates wants that road put in, so, you know, maybe you can all get on the stick and try to get it done eventually. Other things on the traffic that I would like to see as a component of opening 190th, which by the way, 345 has no objection to now, as long as they get, you know, some protection from cut-throughs, which Steve has promised them. A turn lane off Griffin Road would be a great idea, because Country Estates Park is going in there, and then we'll have the traffic going in and out of 345. So they put one in at the church there. He said it was about $80,000. I don't know if we can get the county to kick in some of that, but maybe Emily could work on that. But we really will need a left turn lane there for the park and for the 190th entrance. Second other component, which is kind of not really part of that, but needs to happen, is Margie's Orchid Farm on 66th Street needs to have the canal crossover put in, a bridge to get all that nursery traffic over to 185th Way and out Sheridan. It will get it off our residential streets, and it will open all that no man's land back there to being platted, because now they'll have a road. So, you know, as long as the property touches a road, you can plat it. Right now, that property, you can't plat it. There's no roads back there. So it'll significantly increase the value and tax ability of that property back there, and perhaps change some of the land use, once they do have access. So if you can look at that, getting that 66 completed as well at some point in the future. Anyway, it was a great meeting, and I just hope that we can move along quickly with it, because our kids are getting older, and, you know, it's been 13 years fighting this. So we've got a light at the end of the tunnel now, and it's getting closer, and just keep the, keep up the pressure, keep it going, and we all appreciate it very much. And Steve, thanks for the wonderful job. You were on the hot seat there last night. You did pretty well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
That concludes public comment. Item number five, board reports. Anybody here from any boards like to update us on all the wonderful things that are happening with your boards? Of course, I knew you would absolutely come up here and tell us about it, Gay.
If you look over here at this board, they, we had two boards meet together, so that we wouldn't be passing it to them and them passing it back. And it was amazing. We want to do this more often, because it worked really well. We had a lot of input, and everybody voted. All their votes counted, and so this was all unanimous when it was over with.
Great.
The one is the doors for the, in the kitchen, or, you know, where the countertop is, and the, for Mike, for the countertop. And we were supposed to have the board finished, and we are going to get the board finished. George bought the material, and I really wanted him to do it on pine, even though we presented it on pine as a, it was a sample. But I've also seen samples that don't turn out that way when you do it. So he's going to do one piece, and then we'll look at it and see if it is what the sample was. If it is, then that's what we're going to do. It's called candlelight, and it's right there, and that's for the ceiling. So it really is imperative that we make sure that the sample and the finished product are one and the same. And the, for Mike, for the bathrooms and the bathroom floor, we made them light, because the rooms are not big. They're small. And they picked the globe outside light, and the reason they went with that, they had like three different samples. But it's hard to replace some of the lighting, the glassware, if it breaks, and it's going to be outside, and somebody could throw a ball and break it. So this would be the easiest thing to warehouse, the bulb itself, just buy a case of it, stick it somewhere. If they break it, you just unscrew it, stick a new one in. And so they went with this. It also looks like our streetlights. So they didn't realize until after they picked it. But hopefully, George is in the audience, and he promised he was going to have this done quickly, quickly, quickly. And I have a bet on this, and, you know, I want to win my bet, December and I. So I've got my foot in George's back. He's either going to owe me, or she's going to owe me. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Gay.
Mayor, if I may add to that?
Absolutely.
There's really no financial considerations for council to make for any of these recommendations. These are all the finishes that are included in the existing budget. So unless council would beg to differ with the recommendations of two boards, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Ditto. I agree. Couldn't agree more. And I don't dare. I know better. That's for sure. Any other board member comments? Seeing none. Item number five is concluded. Item number six, council member comments. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Just two things I want to mention. The first is the, the traffic meeting that we had last night. And I just want to thank the residents of 345 and the residents of Country Estates that came out. It was a real positive meeting. There were certainly some heated exchanges. I think I still have a couple arrows in my back. I still haven't quite got out yet, but, but that'll be all right. No, it really was a good, it was a good meeting, and a couple of things that came out of it, as John mentioned, really, for the first time, we have a strong consensus for the folks in 345 and the folks in 185th, 186th, 188th, on a plan to develop that, to open up that road and put some safety measures in place. The point that I really want to, to make tonight is that the only way that this whole plan works is that when we open up the road, we have those controls in place. It can't be one or the other first, and then the other. You know, we can't open up the road and then wait six months for the controls to be in place. They have to go in together. And, and it just has to be, that has to be the way it is. And I want to make that point as strong as I possibly can. Without those controls in place, I was proud of the fact that neither 345 nor the Country Estates folks supported the plan without those controls being in place at the same time. So that's, that is the single most critical part of it. We will talk more about the particulars of it. Just from a general standpoint, we're talking about a, just one gate, and that's on the north end, where the disconnect is right now, and then taking out the, the two side roads on 54th and 57th. Those, that's basically the, the changes that we're, that we're talking about. Couple other minor ones, but those are the, those are the significant points. And so there was a strong consensus on that. We have, obviously, the funding to do the connection. We're going to have to have some discussions about the funding to do some of those other pieces. And so, but it was a great meeting, and, and went, really, it was, it was good to see the whole community come together. One other point I wanted to make, there was a lot of conversation last night regarding 184th. And I just want to summarize that from the standpoint, there were feelings that we needed We have, obviously, the funding to do the connection. We're going to have to have some discussions about the funding to do some of those other pieces. And so, but it was a great meeting, and it went, really, it was, it was good to see the whole community come together. One other point I wanted to make, there was a lot of conversation last night regarding 184th, and I just want to summarize that from the standpoint, there were feelings that we needed to do four lane, and we needed to do it right away. There were feelings that, you know, I expressed my opinion that the only way this road has any chance of going anywhere is a two-lane road with significant sound buffering on either side, and that if we don't have that, then we'll never have a consensus of the community to do it, and it's not going to go anywhere. So, I made that point last night. The one thing that we did talk a little bit about last night, and that I've requested that the administration assist with, is to at least begin to look at different options for funding for that road. And, you know, we've always kind of just known that it's a really big number. And, and so, at this point, I think we're getting through. We had short-term, middle-term, short-term being some of the things we're going to talk about tonight as part of our agenda. Middle-term items were more the 190th that I just gave a summary of, and the long-term is the 184th. And so, 184, obviously, is still very long-term away, but I think within the parameters of, you know, one lane each direction, it is time to start looking at how maybe some funding can be other options for that. So that was, that was the meeting last night. It was very good, and I really appreciate the input from the community. It was, it was excellent. The other thing that I want to touch on fairly quickly is Tisdor, and I think what we're seeing is that in the coming year, the emphasis for Tisdor, the road repaving project, is going to be really on the legal side and getting all our ducks in a row there. And, and I know Carol is already working on that, and she's already had some great ideas, so, so we're getting good progress there. But Keith, just so, you know, we're on the same page, that's really going to be our priority probably for the next three to six months, so we'll be looking to set up some meetings and things like that. And I know you've been already given the go-ahead that we can just contact Carol directly and move forward with that. So, just a quick report on that. I think that's where we're going to be headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and great job. We appreciate your work out there, and getting them to reconcile that with some of those very potentially emotional issues is quite an accomplishment, that's for sure. Freddie?
Yeah. What I'm going to touch on tonight mainly is something, you know, when we had our town hall opening, I had the opportunity to talk to Gary and his wife, and Gary asked me where the bricks were, and I took him and his wife over and showed him his bricks. On the way there, there was a bench, and I told Gary that that bench was for, I think it was Johnny's bench, and I said, "Gary, you deserve it." And he said, "Well, that's up to you people." That's where I'm at tonight. People, I don't know how much you people knew how much Gary did to form this town. Before we became a town, he worked hard with Mecca and other people to do what he did. Then, once we became a town, his job even got worse, because he had five commissioners, and I'm speaking of one of them didn't know what the hell they were doing. And he had to work hard with that. But without Gary, we wouldn't be behind. We wouldn't be a town. And, but what I want to do tonight is something I told Gary that night, unfortunately, I'm very disappointed that I have to do it so early, but we need to do something for that man, to some kind of a monument that just shows how much he put into this town, because he, he was the backbone of this town. So that's what I'm here for, whatever it's going to take, a resolution.
Freddie, I think we're, just to join in with you, if I may, I think we're all on board with you. I think we want to throw it around, talk about it, what that might be, or whatever. I don't, I don't know the...
Might have some other ideas as well.
Yeah, anyhow, so I think we're all on the same page here, but...
Doing something, yeah.
Well, whatever it's going to take, you know...
Yeah, yeah, I think you got our full support in that regard.
You know, all the way.
Yeah, well, I, I'm on board, and I believe the rest of the council's on board, just a matter of what we're going to do.
All right. And really, that's all I got.
Thank you, Freddie. Doug?
Yeah, a couple of things. Following the last meeting, Mr. Green had called and asked if he could meet with myself and Andy in code enforcement, which we did here at town hall. And we spoke about some of the code issues and the proactive stuff, and he was under the impression, Mr. Green, that he would like us to step up code enforcement. And I said, "Well, I don't know that everybody's on the same page with you, but I represent you, and I'm here, and I'll bring it up to the council meeting." So, I'm here to ask you guys if you're up for stepping up code enforcement.
No.
Okay. Bill, there's your answer.
Are you asking, because I'll venture a little bit different opinion on that.
Okay.
And, and that is that I have seen since, you know, I've been on this council, I have seen that in many, many cases, neighbors not wanting to report their neighbor, they get frustrated with something day after day after day, but they don't want to report their neighbor. They don't want to create a wall, something there that is going to make their life miserable for as long as they live there or their neighbor lives there. And, and I've had countless conversations about, you know, and I'm sure you have too, you know, people that have come to you and said, "You know what? This is going on." And you say, "Well, you know, why don't you go ahead and report?" Well, I'm not going to report it. I'm not going to turn in my neighbor, you know? It's just, but it's not right what's going on. I can't count, literally, I cannot count how many of those conversations I've had. And so, so, yeah, I mean, it happens. And I applaud the people, they don't want to, you know, create an issue in their, in their, you know, in their life, and I understand that. There's a way of thinking to say that, you know, if we have ordinances on the books that don't make sense, then we need to make changes to those ordinances so that they make sense. But if our ordinances make sense, why don't we want to apply them?
You know, in, in the first part of your scenario there that you brought up, I understand, and that's part of the reason that people can file a complaint with code enforcement and be anonymous. We have that feature. You don't have to be allowed to say who it is that turned you in, or who said it, just that they got a complaint, and they have to act on it. So, the way code enforcement right now for us works, that unless it's in those three categories that we have, and somebody complains, whether they give their name or don't give their name, if they give an address of what the complaint is and want to be, you know, left hidden, they're allowed to do so, and code is still required to act on that complaint. So, in conversations that I've had, I've even been the one to file the complaint on behalf of a resident or somebody that doesn't want to complain about their neighbor. So I can tell you, I've done that, and sometimes I put my name, and sometimes I don't, and so I don't worry about it, I just deal with it that way. But as far as the ordinances, you know, if it's a dumb ordinance, and we want to go through that whole thing and fix them, fine, but on the flip side of that, if it's an ordinance and it makes sense, do you really want to kick into gear in this town a proactive code enforcement? Because they'll never get off a street for a month. I mean, literally, with just the small things that somebody could dig up, just from the amount of complaints that the town residents contribute to code enforcement with the two code enforcement officers we already have, they stay pretty busy. And I think Keith can tell you that, because he's, he's here at code enforcement hearings. But, so, you know, I would agree with you, if you want to sit back and look at some of the ones that are, that don't make sense or something, to fix them, or get rid of them, or modify them, but I'm not so sure you want to kick, you know, turn loose or take the leash off code enforcement, say, you know, "Go address whatever is wrong in town." Because I think we'll have a riot.
Well, you know, and I guess, you know, I guess my, my thought there is, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think, I think that that is not the right way to go, because, yeah, I think it will be too radical a change. But I do think that the anonymous maybe works, maybe it doesn't work.
Sometimes.
It works for a little while until somebody files a Freedom of Information Act, and then it's not so anonymous anymore. And so, so it's, I would call that semi-anonymous. It's anonymous until somebody gets upset.
Well, someone they call, just say, "I want to do a..." And they'll say, "Don't even give their name and number, just tell them what the complaint is." So they don't even know who that person is sometime.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that's true, but, but at any rate, so, I, I, I'm not, I'm not here to propose that we radically change our process, but I did want to at least present another thought process that maybe we can be thinking about, because I do think there are flaws in the system the way it is today. I'll just leave it at that.
Freddie?
Yeah, I kind of agree with what you're saying, Steve. You know, my thought to you would be, go over to your neighbor and tell him they're doing something wrong, and then if he don't want to do it, yeah, turn him in. Because, let's say if he's supposed to put a pipe on the driveway, and he don't do it, he's going to do it later on. He'd probably be better off if you told him, and he could do it at the times. Well, in certain cases, I think, I don't say, "Let's open it up point-blank," but I think there are certain things, you know, if you've got a guy just bringing in 15 loads of fill, you know, he ain't got a permit, you ought to go over there and say, "Look, you're not supposed to do that. If you don't stop, one will turn you in." But start it, but we've got to start correcting some of the problems, because otherwise, you know, we've got problems over there all, all over the place with people doing houses without pipes under there. And some of these people don't know they have to do it. But I don't say, "Open it up, just have them go look for everything," but there's a lot of things that need to be looked at.
Gary?
Yeah, I just want to comment that here, we're going down a very slippery slope here. Very slippery. And a lot of people I talked to are very happy with the way it is right now. Code enforcement comes through the entire town, every bulk trash, and sees things that are obvious, you know, and a lot of people have told me they don't want, they don't want it to change, they don't want a proactive code enforcement. They would rather have the, if it's, if it's bad enough, they'll make the call. I just want to throw that out there.
And I would never ever support proactive code enforcement where they drive up and down the streets looking for violations. Never in a, in a million years. We already have that with regards to fill and dumping, don't have any problem with, with that. That's something that's been, you know, we've, we've been involved with for many, many years, and I have no problem with that. But to ride up and down the streets, I have no problems with the system that's in place now, the reporting mechanism, anonymous or otherwise. I don't get a lot of complaints. I have spoken to a few people here and there that are concerned. I have two different occasions that I recall that called on behalf of, not a resident, but just asked me to, to address it and have them take a look at it. So I have no problems with the situation, the current policy that exists in the town, but I would never, ever, ever support code enforcement riding up and down the streets looking for code violations, so. Your turn, Gary.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Just, I'll be brief. Just wanted to say, welcome back to Danielle. She's returned to work today. Spoke to her briefly, and she's full of energy, ready to go, and, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, we're glad to have you. And then, of course, the recent passing of Gary Polikoff, it was a very sad day for us, and I put some of that into the newsletter, and I won't expand on it any further. But definitely, we need to be doing something to memorialize his efforts and the man. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Just to throw out the contemplation of maybe another thing to think about as part of this dedication, you all recall the, the small park that's right there on the corner of Flamenco and Griffin, and I'm sure that everybody here that's been involved with this town knows how hard, not only Gary was involved in negotiating that piece of property and how it evolved and finally came to fruition, but one of the things, my recollection was, was how proud he was able, how proud he was of being able to get that property donated to establish a buffer between that small shopping center and the, and the residence. He was so proud of that. That was something that was, you know, that he was just ecstatic about. So the thing that I would like to throw out there to contemplate, and not asking for any decisions, because you threw it out there, Freddie and I agree with you, a pioneer, and here's a guy that really is responsible for, not only that's being here, our philosophy, and it worked very, very hard to ensure that the town of Southwest Ranch has never lost sight of the reason that we incorporated, but to contemplate naming that park, the Gary Polikoff Park. I think that, I know Keith is here, and I'm not asking him to comment, but I know that, I believe that Gary would be absolutely thrilled. And again, he was one that is instrumental. He was the one that promoted that. He was the one that wanted to make sure that if that was going to happen, that the residents, there was some kind of mitigating circumstance to make sure there was an impact on the residents, and he was so very, very proud of that. And just to contemplate that and naming that park after Gary.
You're talking about the one right by Walgreen?
Yes. Right behind CBS.
Yes. I think it's called Trailside, right. Uh-huh, that one. But again, he was one that was actively involved in those negotiations. He got that for the town, and again, he got that for the homeowners, were concerned about it, and were able to reconcile that...
That's a big yes.
...the kingdom being. Yeah, exactly. So I know he'd be very, very proud, and, and...
I'd say that's a great start.
Okay. Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you. So just to throw that out as part of that. I believe council member comments are over, going into item number seven, which is legal comments.
Sure, Mayor, and I'll try to also be brief, and little to say but to thank the council, the entire Southwest Ranches community for their support during this time of myself, my family. Aside from my family, I think the town of Southwest Ranches was probably the most important thing in my father's life, and he spent the last 35 years totally dedicated to the community and to preserving it and to getting it where it is today. In fact, I'll tell you a couple of secrets tonight. One would be that 14 years ago, had you asked, and he probably would have done the job for free. That's how much he absolutely loved the town. And also, I feel that I can start telling you guys stories that maybe might not have been known by a lot of people, and I'll, I'll start tonight with one brief one, and every so often, I'll add to it. But some of you remember, I know Vinnie remembers, when Country Glen came about, and the, came in the middle of Sunshine Ranches back then, and it was in Cooper City, and they wanted five units per the acre, maybe more. It was a very big time in the town. We did a ring around the ranches, and we were doing everything in our power to block Country Glen. We went to the Broward County Commission, and they killed Southwest Ranches residents there and voted in favor of the high-density, multi-family housing community to be built in Country Glen. In fact, their land planner at the time was a guy by the name of Richard Rubin, who was the one who presented the project. And I still remember being there. I was probably eight or nine years old at the time, and Lori Parrish came down from the dais and put her arm around my father and said, "Gary, I'm sorry, I had to do this. You know, this was the right thing to do to, to make this community multi-family." What a lot of you don't know, and probably very few at all know, is that my father went to the University of Miami Law School, and in law school, he had a few of him that were on the work-study program to try to get through law school, himself, Ken Jenny, Bob Butterworth, and others, had to do the school newspaper, and they had to run what was known as the MIMIO machine, where they would put the newspaper through the machine and spin it. Well, one day, Bob Butterworth told my father that he had a date, and he wanted to know if my father could take his spinning time on the MIMIO machine. And my father said to Bob, "I'll do it, but one day you'll owe me a favor." And Bob said, "No problem," and he, my dad did the MIMIO machine. So the county commission voted in favor of the high-density, multi-family residential community of Country Glen. My father gives Bob Butterworth a call the next day, and he says, "Bob, there's a little thing in the Florida statutes, it says any member of the cabinet can call a special meeting of the cabinet to overturn any decision of a county commission that they believe is in, is bad for the state of Florida." And you remember that day I took that MIMIO machine for you? Well, I'm calling in the favor, I need you to immediately call an emergency meeting of the cabinet. So Governor at the time was Lawton Childs, and he had no idea what Bob was doing, and Bob calls an emergency meeting of the cabinet, and the cabinet voted unanimously to overturn the decision of Broward County, the first time in the entire state of Florida that the cabinet of the state of Florida overturned a decision of any county in the state of Florida, and especially that of Broward County. And that's why Country Glen became a one-unit, one-acre community after negotiations with Sunshine Ranches, after we got the upper hand back, after overturning the decision of the county commission. I just wanted to, I'll share some of the inside-baseball stories over the time, but just wanted to bring that up. It was on my mind, and it's something that many of you may not have ever known, probably very few, if any, knew that. You know, on behalf of myself and my family, words will never be able to convey what the loss is to us and to the community and... loss is to us and to the community, and we truly appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you for that story. And we look forward to, hopefully, there's a thousand more in the future, and I'm sure that there are. Okay, that includes item number seven. Item number eight, administration comments. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor, and that's a very, very hard act to follow. Keith and I, you and I have had some, some personal conversations over the past few weeks over this situation. Certainly on behalf of the entire town staff, I do want to pass along our condolences to you and your family. Obviously, our thoughts are with you. Whatever we can do to support you, we're here for. I found it very interesting on Monday at, at the service for your father, in listening to comments that people made about his management philosophy and how he treated people. And what I really took from that is, while I hope to, you know, do justice to him, my management philosophy is very similar to your father's. And certainly, we'll do everything we can to make sure that his legacy lives on in this town. And I will do everything I can with council to pay the appropriate tribute to your father and to your family. On a different note, and hopefully, a little bit lighter note, and you don't normally say that about budget comments, but I do want to thank you all. I want to thank Marty and the rest of the staff for the, the effort that was put in, certainly on behalf of staff to prepare the budget book for council, for the time that you have spent with it, for the time we spent on Tuesday night going through it and having our workshop. You know, we've taken some notes from some of the comments you made. We'll continue to work on that. We look forward to bringing that back to you for, certainly for the, for the next hearing. Obviously, any questions, any issues, anything that comes up, ideas that you have, certainly in the meantime, please let us know, and we'll continue to work those things in. And the only other, the last thing I have, Mayor, is that the last meeting, if you recall, you had asked for an update on our state projects and our funding. And rather than go through a detailed presentation, Emily McCord has compiled a very detailed three-page update memo, which I have for you, and I'll give to you all this evening so you have that. So as you go through it, if you have any questions, obviously, we'll be available to help you with that. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Great, Andy, thank you very much. All right, that concludes administration comments. Item number nine, resolution.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, ratifying a quote with Allstate Resource Management, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $20,920.0 to complete exotic removal and wetland enhancement in the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Any...
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed unless there's any additional questions, comments, or concerns. Russell, call a question, please. We have a motion and a second to approve.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fister Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order to Alvarez Appliance Installation and Repair in the amount of $12,207.23 to replace the four air conditioning units servicing the Town Council chambers. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to, to approve. All right, I'm going to open it up to the public here in just a second. I'd be glad to hear what you have to say. Again, we have motion, second to approve. We're members of the public, and I know that you have a comment. If there's anybody else that'd like to comment on this item, please do so.
My name is Fred Cox.
If we can put that, we can hear you.
Into my poll, that might get...
Mike, closer, we can hear you.
Fred Cox.
Done, we can hear you. Thank you.
5761 Southwest 188th Avenue, Southwest Ranches. My question is, the pricing is wonderful, but why are you going with Goodman? Why don't you get a price from Carrier or Train? It's simple. And they would be happy to give you a good price because they would love to get their foot in the door here. But I see everybody bid Goodman.
We're gonna, we're gonna, and Andy will handle this. It's, it's part of a procurement process that, that they are mandated to follow by law. And he'll explain that to you in just a minute, how we came up with, with this air conditioning replacement.
Goodman is not top quality.
Now, listen, there's a lot of times we'd like to go out and just solicit individual vendors, and there's a lot of problems...
All you have to do is call Carrier or Train. They'll send us...
We're prohibited by law to do that. There is a process that we have to follow. We'll explain it to you.
Explain it to me, nothing. Put it out for bid, put it out for bid on the three equipment instead of the Goodman. Okay, I'm a contractor. I wouldn't bid it anyhow. But you've got some fantastic prices here.
Thank you.
I would stay home before I would do this pricing.
That's a good sign. That's confirmation that you did a heck of a job. Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second to, to approve. Maybe you'll explain the procurement process, anything over $10,000, Andy, and then I'll ask for a vote.
Yes, Mayor, as, as you, as you alluded, within our procurement process, we are required to go out, mandated to get quotes. Sandy Luango worked on this, solicited multiple quotes from multiple vendors. In chasing them to try to get them to respond, we managed to get three to respond because our code does call for us to have at least three responses back. So this was, in chasing vendors, this was the best response we were able to get. I will tell you that vendors number one and two, both happened to be Southwest Ranches residents. The company Alvarez Appliance that, that was awarded, will potentially be awarded this contract, has done other work for us in the past, and they've been just outstanding to work with.
Thank you, Andy. Council, any additional question, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second to approve. Call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fister Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order to Weekly Asphalt Paving, Inc., for $32,250 to complete traffic calming enhanced speed hump improvements in Country Estates. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item?
I just want to ask a question. I saw the picture, and it looks like, you know, you're, you have two lanes, and then it kind of like narrows down. I think that's kind of exciting out there because if the road narrows down and people aren't aware of it, they could hit it. And I'd be a little concerned about that. I don't, I don't know what the speed bump difference is. 188th has speed bumps on it, and they are hard. And these are going where?
I'll explain.
Okay. And why it narrows down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. I know, Steve, that you have some comments. And any other council members that want to comment on this item, please let me know, Steve.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, Gay, actually, that's exactly the response that you, we would like to get when somebody sees it. The interesting thing is it's almost like an optical illusion because the reality is that those chokers do not go within the white line. They're outside the white line. So the, the road itself is no narrower there than it is anyplace else. But because the choker is there, and it, it gives this illusion like the road is getting really narrow here, it, it slows things down. And so there are five of them basically on the ends of those roads is where it is. And it is placed with the, the initial speed bump there so that there's no getting around the speed bump, there's no, no swill passage, you know, so... Exactly, exactly. Right, 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 so.
Thank you, Steve.
I have a question.
Gary?
Yeah, Steve, I was not at your meeting last night. Did you, did the rumble strips ever come up or anything like that?
No, I avoided them like the plague. No, they did not come up. No, they didn't come up.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah. That's a good sign, Gary. Any other additional questions, comments, or concerns about this item? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fister Kelly?
Yes.